All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the October 3, 2022 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to Order. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, and please remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Unfortunately, the city of Crest Hill lost a longtime city employee. Mr. Bill Ramouda passed away on August 22, 2022. He was 80 years old. He served in the 1970s, 80s, and 1990s as the city mechanic for many, many years. He was the son-in-law of former Mayor Felix Boreo. We certainly would like to extend our condolences to his wife Beverly, his son Bill Jr., his daughter Nancy, and to all of his grandchildren. We certainly want to take this opportunity to thank him for his years of dedicated service to the city of Crest Hill. And I would ask for your thoughts and prayers with a moment of silence in his honor of Bill Ramouda. Thank you. Roll call, please, Chris.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Verchay.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Zepidi.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kowal.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, before you, the minutes of the city council meeting held on September 19, 2022. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Verchay for the approval of the minutes of the September 19, 2022 Crest Hill City Council Meeting. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Zepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kowal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We also have before you the minutes of the work session held on September 26, 2022. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Verchay for the approval of the work session minutes of September 26, 2022. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Zepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kowal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, I would ask if we could deviate to the, to number 16, line item number 16, under the mayor's report for the, a resolution honoring the Crest Hill Lions Club on the 60th anniversary of their service to the city of Crest Hill. We have the honor and privilege of having several of the Crest Hill Lions members in the, in attendance this evening. So I would ask that we begin with the reading of Resolution Number 1157 in honor of the club who was, celebrated their 60th anniversary on September 27, just a few days ago. So we'll begin with the reading by Alderman Dyke.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 1157, a resolution honoring the Crest Hill Lions Club on the 60th anniversary of their service to the city of Crest Hill. Whereas the city, the Crest Hill Lions Club was chartered in the city of Crest Hill on September 27, 1962, with Mr. Albert Kearns as the organization's first president, as a community service organization, promote the support of those individuals with vision and hearing impairments. And whereas the Crest Hill Lions Club, over the past 60 years, supports the Lions Club International, the Lions of Illinois Foundation, the Illinois Diabetic Association, and other worthy charitable organizations, and...
Whereas the Crest Hill Lions Club engaged annually in multiple projects that raise funds and benefit the Crest Hill community. These projects include Lions Tootsie Pop Day, annual Lions Picnic and Car Show, Lions Candy Day, Sight and Sound Sweepstakes, Raffle, Community Easter Egg Hunt, Community Easter Egg Hunt, Shanahan Fest Bingo Tent, Lockport West High School Reunion, Holiday Tree Lightning Ceremony, Holiday Parade, and the ever-popular Halloween, Halloweeny Roast. These projects have raised $95,000, which has improved the quality of life for many Crest Hill residents and organizations, and...
Whereas the Crest Hill Lions Club is very active in the Crest Hill community and are deserving of our gratitude for the many events and the donating of their time and resources to benefit all of our residents and organizations, and...
Whereas the Crest Hill Lions Club, under the leadership of President Jaclyn Gregory, continues to be a viable community service organization in 2022 and lives by the motto, "We serve."
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, as follows. Section 1, the mayor and city council offer their congratulations and profound expression of thanks to all the members, past and present, of the Crest Hill Lions Club for their years of greatly appreciated community service.
And section 2, the mayor and city council extend their best wishes to the men and women of the Crest Hill Lions Club, and hope that the Crest Hill Lions Club will continue to serve the Crest Hill community for years to come in the fine manner in which they have for the past 60 years.
Section 3, that the Crest Hill City Clerk is directed to forward a certified copy of this resolution to the President of the Crest Hill Lions Club and make the original of this resolution available to members of the general public during normal business hours at Crest Hill City Clerk's office. Resolved this third day of October 2022, Christine Verchay Hall, City Clerk, approved this third day of October 2022, Raymond R. Solomon, Mayor.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the approval of a resolution honoring the Crest Hill Lions Club on the 60th anniversary of their service to the city of Crest Hill. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Zepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kowal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
And John Verchay.
Yes.
Motion carries Resolution 1157.
Okay, we have the honor and privilege of having several of the Lions Club members in attendance this evening. I'll introduce everybody. We have Lori Thrasher, Ray Simpinski, Bob Lucheski, John Dean.
John.
Our President, Jackie Gregory, Sam Shalino, Scott Pointon, Ed Rudiger. We also have several members of the city council and city employees that are members of the Lions Club. We have Alderman Verchay. We have Alderman Albert. We have City Clerk Christine Verchay Hall. We have Lori Thrasher. And we have Terry Finollio, along with myself. Let me say, as the mayor, that I've been a Lions member for almost a little over 30 years. And I will tell you that I'm a very proud Lions member, as I'm sure that everyone sitting in this room is. During the resolution, you've seen everything that this Lions Club has done over the years. And they've raised almost $100,000 and given it back, not only to our community, but other organizations. They have certainly improved over their 60 years as a very active service organization club in the city of Crest Hill. They've improved the quality of life for all our residents through the donations that they made to the fire department, to the library, to our schools, to the city of Crest Hill, and a lot of the surrounding agencies, our surrounding communities throughout Will County. So for that, I thank you for your commitment, your dedication, your loyalty to the city of Crest Hill, to our residents, and for improving the quality of life for many, many of our residents. And the thousands people, the thousands of people that you have affected over the 60 years when it all started. And again, this is still a very, very active social organization, service club in the city of Crest Hill. So with that, I'd like to introduce and bring to the podium our President of the Lions Club, Jackie Gregory. And on behalf of all the residents of the city of Crest Hill, all the past members of the Crest Hill Lions Club, all the future members of the Crest Hill Lions Club, it's my honor and privilege, on behalf of all the residents and the city council, to present to you a copy of the resolution that was just read, honoring the Crest Hill Lions Club for 60 years of service in the city of Crest Hill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you to the council. I just wanted to say that 10 years ago, I was the first female into the club. And here I am, 10 years later, as the first female president. And I am honored to be President of all these Lions. We work so hard throughout the year to raise money. All the residents that donate to all of our, you know, fundraisers and everything, we appreciate it. So I am going to turn it over to John Dean, and he is going to talk about our club and some of the things that we've done. Thank you again.
Well, I'm up there because I'm the old guy in the club. Not the oldest, but one of the oldest. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and city council for proclamation for 60th anniversary year. Two days ago, yeah, two days ago, I celebrated the beginning of my 47th year in the club. So I've been, been around for a while, 46 years. Been a president a couple of times. I've been a treasurer for maybe 12 years now, something like that. And probably chaired everything that the club's ever done.
Twenty years.
Twenty? Time flies when you get older. Anyway, it's a wonderful organization. I'm very, very proud to be a member of, member of it. And I, I've been what I consider myself a very active member for the last 40-something years. My job here tonight, I guess, was to come up here and kind of let you know what our club does. I didn't know we were going to have that sprinkled into the resolution. But I'm going to go into depth a little bit further. Just to give you an idea, were that $97,000 plus, $97,000-plus dollars is gone? This is over the last 10 years. Just be kind of brief with it. Richland, Manji, and Lockport High School, we have donated $5,450 to those schools over the 10-year period. Towards their athletic program, their graduation night scholarships. Our Line, our Own Line Scholarship Fund, which is open to everybody in our district, is, it's a scholarship program for people that are specializing in working with the hearing and sight impaired. We've donated $1,800 to that. Crest Hill Pony Baseball sponsor, sponsor fees, $1,850. Our Easter Egg Hunt's $2,600. Student of the Month and Student of the Year awards at the two schools, Richland and Manji, $9,500. Our Winnie Roast over the last many years. At the three different locations we do now in the city, $7,800. The CASA Program, $900. Will County Advocates, Advocates Center, $1,600. And we, we made, how many hundred blankets? We made 150. They collect stuff for the kids, to give to the kids that are from broken homes and stuff like that, going through tough times. And we made all these little blankets that you buy them materially and you tie to little knots on the end of it. I'm sure some of you have seen those. So we got involved with that somehow. Our biggest one here is the area food pantries. That includes Northern Illinois Food Bank, St. John's Lutheran up here, and the Family Outreach right over here in Plainfield Road. $11,500. And that's, that's a program that we kept going, and we were, we really worked hard on that, on that particular program when COVID first hit. Because there wasn't a lot of other stuff going around. There wasn't a lot of places to spend our money. So we figured the food pantry was a very good place to, you know, to, to fund and keep funding. Crest Hill Police Association, $6,400. We were a supporter of the K-9 program right from the, from day one. We recently purchased some first aid packets for the police officers. Area disasters, tornadoes, floods, et cetera, $7,500. We donated money for the, to, to the Coal City Lions Club when they had their tornado, I think it was three or four years ago. We donated money to Watsika, which is in our district, when they had the flooding in their area a couple of years ago. Eyeglasses and hearing aids for restaurants, residents, excuse me, $7,575. All of that is local. All of those were Crest Hill people. Camp Lions, which is the Lions Club in Illinois. It's a summer camp for the hearing impaired and sight impaired, $10,500. White Oak Library, $10,000. We, we funded pretty much, I think, the computer lab when the new library first opened up. We've got a nice plaque hanging in there. Movies in the Park, $1,860. Joliet Area Hospice, they were looking for funds for their new wing that they just recently completed, $2,000. Pink Heels, which I know all of you knows what that program is for the cancer. The Crest Hill Memorial Monument, we were a large donor of the original monument when they first built it. And we recently, I think they did an upgrade under here, is that a couple of years ago, maybe?
Vietnam, another Vietnam.
Yeah, another Vietnam, $1,000. Sudden, the Sudden Death Syndrome Program, $1,000. Beeper Baseball, which is a baseball program for the, for blind, blind kids. We don't have a team here locally, but this is a program that kind of goes around the Midwest and has baseball games. And they teach the kids, you know, they, they pick up the sounds with the baseball coming at them, and that's how they learn how to hit the ball and field the ball. And so it's a very good program, $625. St. Joseph's Silver Cross Toy Drive, $1,500. Those were toys for kids that we bought for their pedio, pediatrics program. And that's an ongoing thing for our club. We've spent thousands and donated thousands of dollars more, of one-time donations and a lot of smaller donations over the, over the years. And this, these numbers are just from the last 10 years. A little bit over $95,000, which I think for a club of 28 people is, is a, is a pretty nice chunk of change. And it's been a pleasure to be a help to all these organizations and groups that, that I mentioned. Some of the fundraisers, you know, we have is our big, our big Luau Picnic is our big one. We do the bingo at their Three River Festival in Shanahan. And our Candy Day, Candy Day is a big fundraiser for us. That's a statewide thing in the state of Illinois. So there's several ways we raise our money. Like I said, I'm very proud to be a member of this club. And it's nice that we have a few people here that are on the city council involved, some good members. And I think one thing I just kind of want to bring up from the past, and you probably wonder why I'm going to bring this up. But this is one of the big things shortly, well, 10 years after I joined the club, we did, and I'm sure maybe one or two of you people here will remember it, remember our participation, participation in it. But when the tornado came to Plainfield and Crest Hill 30-plus years ago, okay?
Thirty-two.
Our club got together and we put out, we put out the word, I think in the newspaper we did it, of any residents that needed immediate help. And we got donations from, we got donations from our... There's no telling in a minute why I'm going into this. We got donations from our district and also the state of Illinois out of their disaster fund, the $5,000. We also got a donation from all the clubs in our area. Joliet, Plainfield, Oswego, Joliet had two or three clubs at that time. Milford, I mean, clubs all over, Bowling Brook. And those clubs together donated $6,500. So what we did, we set up a time for people that needed immediate help. And we actually met with them. We had, we had a certain board, I think there was three of us involved with it. We had a certain board that got together, and they would tell us, they told us what their immediate needs would be. And we actually wrote checks out to them. And we, we funneled most of the business, because they gave us good deals and everything, at the local Kmart up here, and also at Jewel Food on Larkin down here. And most of the donations were for, they went anywhere from $250. And there, there were some up to $500 or $600, depending on what their immediate needs were. Some needed clothes for their kids, pajamas for their kids, you know, right off the bat, right after this thing happened. So that's something, that was one of the biggest things I was involved with when I, shortly after I joined the club. And the reason I'm bringing it up is, you hear some of these numbers. When I mention the area disaster, $7,500, some of that money is, goes to the International Disaster Fund. Some of it goes to money that we donated, donate to the State Disaster Fund. And some of it is money that we gave to clubs in the area that had disasters, like I mentioned Coal City tornado, the Watsika had the floods. But I just wanted to bring that up because a lot of people and a lot of members of our club don't even know what we, what we did, you know, back there when the tornado hit. But we, we did, we did help a lot of people. I think there was 40-something checks that we wrote out for, like I said, anywhere from $250 to $500 for immediate help. So that's all I got to say. Does anybody have any questions about anything the Lions Club does?
Always looking for the members.
Yeah, I'm going to leave some pamphlets right here on the table. You know, we have 28 members in our club. Some of us are getting older, and it's getting harder and harder to accomplish the things that we like to keep accomplishing on a yearly basis. We're always looking for good members. So, you know, maybe some members of the city council that would like to join the club, or if you have any friends, tell, tell them about the club, or anybody you know you think might be a good member. You know, they can get ahold of us on our website. They can get ahold of us by calling any of the members. But we need new members. Our, our club is like everybody else. All the service organizations, membership is dwindling, and it's harder and harder to get new members. It's just as simple as that. But we're going to keep going as long as we can. And we'd like to keep all these projects up. So I'll just leave this on the table. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, John. As long as there are so many Lions members here, I would extend the invitation, if anyone would like to come up and say anything at the podium in honor of the 60th anniversary.
Hello, everyone. My name's Scott Pointon. I'm a Crest Hill resident, proud member of the Lions Club. I, I would just add on this wonderful anniversary that, I, I don't, I'm sure many of us have thought this thought in our heads before, but there are other long-established Lions Clubs in the area from towns that are maybe much larger than Crest Hill that have looked at this club as an inspiration, because this club does so well with, with a small group of folks. So there's, you know, Joliet, other, other areas, you know, they, they wish their clubs did for their towns what, what our club's able to do here in Crest Hill, so.
Yeah, anybody else from the Lions Club? Let me open it up to city council. Any comments from city council?
I'll start, I guess. Well, I want to thank each one of you for all the dedication and the hard work. And blind dean, Mr. Simpinski keeps trying to recruit me, but my son told me as long as he's there, I'm not allowed to be there. So maybe I'll kick him to the curb one day. I, I am proud of everything that you guys do, especially like when we started building homes and 20 years ago in the Remington area. I remember one of your Lions, he's Heidi back there, Simpinski brought the Halloween Roast to our area. And we're very, very thankful. It's one of the biggest things that the resident, they always look for it. And I'm honored to help in that event. I don't know how this year I'm going to do, but I'm going to do my best. But I want to thank each one of you for dedication. It's a timeless work. It's a lot of dedication. I've seen it. I'm very proud and thankful for each one of you. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank you all. I understand the perils of all this. From leading the Women's Civic League here in Crest Hill for many, many years, I understand how membership is dwindling and how hard it is to get things done with a small group of people. And you want to keep going and keep doing the wonderful things that the poor people have done for the organization. There's a lot of pressure there. I get that, too. So I, I admire your tenacity. So thank you.
Oh, I wanted to congratulate all of you and, and thank you for all the service and commitment that you bring to the club. It surely shows. $7,000-plus dollars of the Halloween Roast, is that what?
That's what we, that's what we spent over the last 10 years.
That's a lot, that's a lot of hot dogs.
It's about, how many?
$2,000.
About $2,000 every year.
And I brought all three of my kids to those Halloween. They look forward to them every year as they were growing up, and it was really a bright spot in their night. But the level of volunteerism for all the, all the different causes that you are involved in is, it's just very commendable. And I want to thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you all for your service and dedication. It's really, really awesome.
Mr. Verchay, how long have you been a Lions?
About two years.
Can we have a number on that?
I think in a couple of weeks, it'll be about 52 years.
Well, that's awesome. I think you should get...
I think the 17th of October or something, I joined it.
You should get a round of applause for that, Mr. Verchay.
I want to thank all the members of the Lions Club for all their time, dedication, everything they do for everything that they do for everybody, not just here in Crest Hill and our community, but elsewhere to help those in need. So thanks again.
Let me say, I'm, I'm also proud to be a member of the Lions Club and all the fellows and ladies now that are in the club. I really appreciate what we all do. So thank us all. And thank you, Zoll.
We're in both hats, so I, I'm certainly proud of the club. Been a member for over 20 years. That's why I had to remind you of your treasurer's duties there for over 20 years. So I'm proud to say I've been a member a third of the existence of the club. But that's nothing compared to the three-quarters or even more than that that you've been, been members. But I, I appreciate the city council recognizing the club tonight and certainly a great organization. And again, if anybody's interested, you know where to find me, but find the rest of these folks. So I would just ask that maybe if Christine could come down, and Ray and John, if we can get a group picture of all the Lions?
Sure. Before that, I'm going to leave, I'm going to leave one more round of applause. We all in? Pretend you like each other.
You all there?
We can't see the back, people. Red.
It's just red, no big deal.
What do you want me to do?
Nothing, I'm just taking a photo.
Thank you.
Thank you all again.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Okay, moving back to number three on our agenda, to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have one agenda item. It is the ordinance amending Title II Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2.22 of City Administrator of the Code. As you recall from the work session last week, there was extensive discussion as to the Redline version that I had prepared. There were some questions about the memo that I had prepared. There was some discussion about further changes to the ordinance. That straw vote taken was that the motion was not going to be carried, but it was going to be on the agenda. So the clean copy of the ordinance that is in your packet has only the changes that were in Redline last week accepted. It does not have the change that was extensively discussed with respect to paragraph C of the administrator ordinance.
So moved is presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Sepiti, for the approval of an ordinance amending Title II, that is Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2.22, City Administrator of the Crest Hill City Code. Questions or comments?
I just have one item. It was in the work session, but it didn't seem to make it till this final version, and I would like it to be added and voted on. It's under the General Duties section of the ordinance. It would be the third sentence. City administrators shall be responsible for and direct the efficient and productive administrator of all city departments under the direction of the mayor. I'm requesting to have Ann City Council added at the end of that sentence. That was all I had.
I'll accept the change.
So the motion is to approve the clean copy with the addition just made by Alderman Sepiti. And is there a second for the renewed motion?
Second.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Gazzal?
Yes.
Keen Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
No.
Joe Kubal?
No.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rashay?
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries ordinance 1926.
I will make that change. I will take the draft watermark off and submit it tomorrow.
Thank you.
I also have two announcements specifically for the council, but focused with Alderman Dyke. The house on Berry Circle that, if you recall, we had litigation over. Some people on the council thought that it was a hopeless cause because it was in such bad shape, but you approved the settlement whereby a new owner took over. I'm happy to report that the final occupancy permit on that house was issued, and the house is now going to be back on the tax rolls presumably as a viable property. I don't know whether the owner plans to rent it out or whether he plans to try to flip it, but we dismissed the case pursuant to the consent decree that was entered, so that is done. Also, on the Wilcox address, where we had the two residences on the same lot, we entered a consent decree a while back on that one. You gave the owner until, I think, June 30th to get the back tenant out. The tenants finally got evicted after having to file a lawsuit for eviction. The water and sewer has been, or the utilities have now been cut to that back property, so it is no longer going to be a dwelling unit. He can use it for storage or whatever, but that dismissal order has been entered, and those two cases, I am happy to report, are now finally closed. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Well, I'm not sure if it's you that I asked this of, but I have gotten several phone calls from residents that currently have AT&amp;T U-verse. And prior to the recent pass, they were able to watch these meetings on that as well as Comcast, which is part of what they're obligated to do. I believe it's some sort of state statute or mandate or something. But they can no longer get them on AT&amp;T, they say. And one lady told me, when she called, she said that it had something to do with the city or something. I said, "No, that's not true." So can we find out why they're not able to view it anymore? They should be able to.
I think so. I think between Jim and I, we can contact AT&amp;T's community liaison to find that out.
Because I was the one that fought to get that on there when they weren't broadcasting and they were supposed to be. So, thank you, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Any other questions, the city attorney?
Yeah. Did we ever get the judge to grant that decree for us to get inside that property on Broadway? To inspect it again?
The petition for the administrative search warrant has been filed. I don't think it's actually been presented to the court yet, but I think we can get that done in the next couple of weeks. I think it's set, so.
Were you ever able to get ahold who owns the property?
Well, the property is held in a land trust with Chicago Title. We've written to Chicago Title and said either if you own the property, let us know and let us in to do the administrative search, or if you are not the beneficial owner, to send our correspondence to the beneficial owner. I mean, that's what the banks do when they hold property in trust, and we've gotten nothing from the beneficial owner.
Well, it's just real discouraging to me that, you know, this isn't something new. This has been an ongoing issue. Our past building inspector was supposed to have been in there, so I don't know what he did or what he didn't do or follow up. But, you know, this should have been resolved, you know, done years ago, and I don't know why it's been taking so long. I'd like to see this property cleaned up once and for all.
Well, I'm hopeful that if the judge enters the administrative search warrant issue or order, that obviously our inspectors can get in, and then we'll have an idea of what's inside there, and we know where to go. Obviously, we'll keep you in the loop as soon as I know from city staff what or how bad it is, and whether it's something that we need to proceed with demolition or just some other method to try to force the house to get into compliance.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Moving on to our city administrator, Jim Moreno. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have two items for you tonight. The first item is the purchase of additional security cameras for the city center, for both the city hall and the police station. As I indicated in my memo, the original design for the security cameras in that building was for 93 Access brand cameras. To date, we've received and installed 60 of those. This has been going on for months where we have not been able to get the remaining cameras from Access, mainly due to supply chain issues. Seen that with a lot of materials. And we keep getting told from that that we'll get them in the next week, next two weeks, next month, and that's been going on for months. We've gotten to the point where I don't think we can wait any longer, because we're not sure when we're going to get the remaining cameras in, and we'd like to have all the cameras installed in the building before we actually move in the building. So, police department worked with harbor contractors and found other cameras, a different brand, Hanwha brand cameras, that they can purchase through local company, Low Voltage Solutions. So what we decided to do was purchase the additional cameras, it's about 37 additional cameras, from the Low Voltage Solutions, which they have on stock, and those can be installed, and that would complete the security camera project for the building. And then for the Access cameras, we're still going to purchase those, and when those get delivered, we can replace the Hanwhas with the Access and have the entire city center building installed with Access cameras. And those Hanwhas, we're going to use for Public Works. The Public Works Building and some of the Public Works facilities don't have a security system and security cameras, and that's something that I think we've needed for quite a while, and we should have those in place. Considering the fact that it's been difficult to obtain these cameras, we didn't want to cancel the order from Access, and it seemed to make sense that we would keep that order, purchase the additional cameras for now to get us into the city center, and then use those cameras later for the Public Works Building.
So those cameras will work with the other ones until we get the ones we ordered?
Yes, they're interchangeable.
And did I hear you say that they don't have these cameras at the Public Works Building?
No, we don't.
Would that portion of the purchase be coming out of the buildings, Public Works budget?
Yes. Yeah, the cameras that are going to ultimately be used for the Public Works facilities will be paid for out of the Public Works budget.
You say they're interchangeable. The second brand we're getting is Hanwhas. Are they equal quality, though?
Yes, they are. I think they may have been one of the brands, police department-
Those were one of the brands we were considering. Some of them have a little bit higher failure rate out of the box, meaning when you open it up and put it in, it doesn't work, and you got to interchange, and they send them back. But virtually the same thing, same system. It'll all work with our security systems.
Okay, motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion. So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Alder Woman Gazzal, seconded by Alderman Albert, authorization to purchase security cameras associated hardware from Low Voltage Solutions in the amount of $20,498. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Keen Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rashay?
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson?
Yes.
And Claudia Gazzal?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, the second item I have is authorizing the purchase of property at 2309 Caton Farm Road. In preparation to moving to Lake Michigan Water, we need a transfer station at this location to provide adequate water pressure to the west and southwest areas of town. Mark Seifer worked with Strand Associates to identify property in that area that would be suitable for this station, and they determined that 2309 Caton Farm would be suitable. We own the property adjacent to that, so by combining these two properties together, it gives us ample space that we need for this transfer station. Strand and Associates looked at the property and agreed that it would be appropriate for what we need. We obtained an appraisal of the property, which came in at $30,000. Chris Basia from our law firm contacted the property owner, and the property owner agreed to that price. So what we have to approve tonight is resolution authorizing the execution of a real estate contract for the purchase of that property.
So moved is presented.
Second. Second. Motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Albert, for the authorization to execution of a real estate contract for the purchase of certain real estate property located in the city of Crest Hill County, state of Illinois, 2309 Caton Farm Road, in the amount of $30,000. And this was discussed at last week's work session also. Questions or comments?
Well, I did review those appraisals, and I did look into it because of the timeline on them, but because it's land, they allow you to go back further for your appraisals, find something suitably to compare it to, so I was okay with that.
Roll call, please.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rashay?
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal?
Yes.
Keen Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries resolution 1158.
Scott, I want it for you.
That's all I have.
Okay, any questions, the city administrator? All right, thanks, Jim. Moving on, our public works department. Our director of public works, Mark Seifer. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have a plethora of agenda items for you this evening. The first being an approval for a pay request, number one, from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated, with direction to send it to the IEPA for approval and dispersment to Williams Brothers. As part of the East Plant Phosphorus Project right now, and then as part of the West Plant Project coming up, I'll be bringing every pay request in front of council. After council approves the pay request, that is sent down to the IEPA for dispersment to the contractor. So the city, tonight, you, city council is approving the decision to the IEPA, but also during the list of bills, you'll be approving the payment. We will then hold the check until the payment from the IEPA comes to the city and we can cash that. So then we'll cash that, and then we'll pay the contractor. So it's just our way of checks and balances. So with this first one, I'm asking for approval of pay request, number one, from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated, with direction to send it to the IEPA for approval and dispersment.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Sepiti, seconded by Alder Person Overland, for the approval of pay request, number one, from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated, with direction to send it to IEPA for approval and dispersment. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rashay?
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal?
Yes.
Keen Oberlin?
Yes.
And Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next agenda item I have for you this evening is approval of pay request, number two, from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated, with direction to send it to the IEPA for approval and dispersment.
So moved is presented.
Second.
Motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Sepiti, for the approval of pay request, number two, from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated, with direction to send it to IEPA for approval and dispersment. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rashay?
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal?
Yes.
Keen Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
And Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, then, ask me, skip number eight. It was a technological error, my fault for having two agenda items with the exact same thing. So number eight and number nine are the exact same request with different dollar amounts. So if we can skip number eight and go to number nine. This would, since we've acquired the easement for the property behind Menard, staff is recommending a contract with Strand and Associates to begin the design of the well and the associated transmission main to well 10. So I'm asking to approve a contract with Strand Associates for the design and bidding of well 14, construction and associated transmission main in the amount not to exceed $158,000.
So moved. Second.
Who made the motion? Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alder Person Overland, for the approval of contract with Strand and Associates for the design and bidding of well 14, construction and associate transmission main in the amount not to exceed $158,000. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Rashay?
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal?
Yes.
Keen Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next agenda item I have for you is to enter an agreement with Core and Main to purchase, install, and implement a fixed base water meter reading system. As we talked about during the budget process with our move to Lake Michigan Water and council's approval to start working to replace all of the water meters and moving over to a fixed base system. This would be for the purchase of the antennas, the installation of the antennas, and the installation of the hardware. And then a yearly cost, a yearly cost for, a yearly cost agreement. This would be $168,520, and this would be with Core and Main, who has been providing our water meters and water meter service for at least the last 10 years, as long as I've been here.
So moved is presented. Second.
Motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alder Woman Gazzal, to enter an agreement with Core and Main to purchase, install, and implement a fixed base water meter reading system in the city of Crest Hill. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Oh, can I have one question? I know I had asked you in the work session, but part of this would involve cutting down the time to read the meters and manpower, and just so people understand, it's going to be saving money on the back end.
Well, it, everyone, yes, you're correct. It says it saves money on the back end with the, it goes from two to seven days to read all the meters to 20 seconds.
Yeah.
And then the other nice thing is we'll be able to have a customer portal, where customers will be able to see their bills, their usage, a history, many other different, a lot of other communities have it where they can see up to date how much water they've used up to date. The other nice thing is we'll be able to get, every morning, we'll get leak alarms. So anybody who has a leak, we can be able to start calling residents and letting them know that they have a leak now instead of when they give their bill two months later. So this is all part of an upgrade in the entire meter reading software system.
And I just wanted the public to hear that, because it's a wonderful thing, and, you know, instead of just spending money, tell them what it's going to save and how it's going to help them and how it's going to benefit them, and the portal, I think, is wonderful. So, thank you, Mark.
No problem.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhval.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
The next agenda item is to enter into an agreement with Census for use of their automatic meter reading software, equipment software. There is no cost to this. This is just the rules and regulations of us using the software, the proprietary software. Attorney Stiff and myself worked with them for a few months now to get their language correct. So this would be the use of their proprietary software to read the meters.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alder Person Oberlin, for the approval and agreement with Census for use of their automatic meter reading equipment software. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhval.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
And Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
The last agenda item I have for you this evening is a change order with Camco Construction for the work being done on Theodore Street Storm sewer for not to exceed an amount of $14,034.78. As we excavated on Theodore Street, a large COM Ed transmission wire was found in the way. So Engineer Wedeman worked with the contractor to come up with a solution where we would then be adding just some flanking, some flanking structures, and then the Florida drain is, driven down Theodore, has gone in on the north south side already. So this would be a change order to, for $14,034.78. The original project was under budget, but under bid by $19,000, so this would still be under budget for this project. So I'm asking for your approval.
So moved. Second. Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche, to approve change order, number one, with Camco Construction for the work being done on Theodore Street Storm sewer for $14,034.78. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhval.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
That is all I have for this evening, but I just wanted to remind all of the residents that we are flushing hydrants. Crew should begin, starting this, tonight, in about an hour. We finished zone one last night. We're in Boreo, the Boreo subdivision right now. We should finish that tonight and move into zone three, which is on the other side of Weber. Remind residents to check their water in the morning before they use it because there might be some slight discoloration. And if you have any questions, feel free to visit the city website. There's a hydrant flushing page now with frequently asked questions. And also, if you have any other questions, call Public Works at 815-741-5108. And with that, I'd be happy to have any questions.
Any questions to Public Works?
Just thank you for everything you guys are doing.
All right.
Ron.
Thanks, Mark. Moving on to City Engineer Ron Wedeman. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items on the agenda tonight. The first item is to approve a resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Crest Hill and Will County for installation and maintenance of illuminated street signs on Weber. This is additioned to, it's the final locations. Last year, you approved signs at city center and Crest Hill Drive. This will be for Root Street, Division, and Randich whenever it gets installed. All this is doing is putting us in place, so we don't have to go and get an agreement at a later date. I do have in your packet, though, to go ahead and have Root done now. We purchased the signs, and I have a quote in there for the installation.
So moved, Mayor. Second. We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for a resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Crest Hill and Will County for installation and maintenance of illuminated street name signs on Weber Road. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhval.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution 1159.
Second item I have is to approve an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between the city of Crest Hill and BRT Outdoors LLC for digital video display message signs subject to legal descriptions and pin exhibits being included on exhibit A.
So, once again, can we let the residents know that this is not costing us anything at all?
Yes. This, this program is an outdoor company. They'll be coming in, they'll be installing, looking to install the four locations within the city. They will cost , it will be nothing to the city for the installation and the future maintenance. The city will have a slot in there. There's eight slots. They run 10 seconds apiece. So therefore, every 10 seconds, the city would have free advertising that they can put in there, put in whatever they would like. Also, it has, it allows the police department to put out emergency information, you know, if needed. So again, this is a real nice program. We're starting with four locations, you know, as things develop, there could potentially be some more, you know, but these are, we got four locations that we're starting with.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have most-
I had to interject. So because of the term of this lease, it has to pass by a three-quarters majority with the mayor vote. So you need seven of nine votes.
We have most-
The language on the, when the 20-year timeline starts still needs to be-
Yes, it's, they have to, the time will, the 20 years will start from the-
Last sign.
The final completion and operation of the last sign, they are, we added language that they are required to provide us with written notice of when that last sign is operational. So there's going to be no doubt as to when the 20 years starts.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Alder Person Oberlin, seconded by Alder Woman Gazal. Any more questions or comments in regards to the request for an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between the city of Crest Hill and BRT Outdoor LLC for a digital video display messages signs subject to the legal description and pin exhibits being included on exhibit A. Questions or comments?
Just want to thank you, Ron, that he went above and beyond to work on this. So thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhval.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance 1927.
And that is, that's all I have for tonight unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions of City Engineer?
Yes, I ask you a question. I had a call, though, Saturday night about 7:00 before they started working on Rain or Avenue, and the fellow was a little unhappy. He said the road was tore up for about two months, and what are we going to fix it? When are we going to do this? Could you explain why the road took so long to do?
Yeah, yes, I can. That, actually, all of our projects that we had going on this summer started in, in June. The end of June, there was a material handling strike that went on, that went on for about eight to nine weeks. None of the contractors could get any stone to be used in the concrete and/or asphalt. So that was the delay. The, I think it was nine weeks, I think, is the total time that the strike went on. So we were on hold until the strike was over, and then it took the contractors about another week or no to get, another week or so to get remobilized up, and then we finished the projects relatively quickly. But the delay was kind of out of our control. It was a strike by the material handlers. Contractors really couldn't do anything about it either. It shut the industry down. So, and in this area, there's two major quarries, and both of those were on, on strike. So it shut everything down.
Thanks, Ron. I hope the gentleman, some of the people in Rain or Avenue watching tonight don't know why it was done.
Yeah, I did receive some phone calls, too, and we talked through it as, you know, as we went along. I did have the contractor try to go up and clean up, you know, a couple times, you know, try to keep it, but, you know, it's tough because when he ended, he wasn't planning on, they weren't planning on the strike. So, you know, some things were kind of left in rough order, so.
It was strange that he called me on a Saturday night about 7:00. Monday morning, they were grinding the street already. So, you know, what a coincidence that was.
Tell them you had it done.
Thanks, Ron.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Okay, moving on to community development. Unfortunately, our community, Community and Economic Development Director, Tony Budzakowski, resigned. His last day was last Thursday. He took a similar position in Western Springs. So we certainly want to thank him for his time that he spent here with us, even though it was very short. Wish him well in his new endeavor. So with that, I will handle that portion of the community development to the city council. This is for an approval of an ordinance grant, granting a special use permit to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property, the petition of Alano Club of Joliet. You have the information in your packet. You were also at the previous work session here with city council. You are asking for a special use permit for an indoor civic institutional use building in the Hillcrest Shopping Center, the former Crest Hill Animal Hospital. There also includes eight conditions that were discussed that we will certainly read and have you agree or disagree with those tonight as we move forward. So with that, I'm going to ask for one of the spokesmen, either Todd or John, to come up to the podium, maybe give a little bit more information. I know we went through all of this at the plant, at the work session that we had. You did go before the Plan Commission about a month ago, which was approved by the Plan Commission. So I would ask just for a generic kind of update for the viewing audience on television, for the proposed usage and the special use request.
Hi, everybody. Name's John Hadiotis. I currently serve as president of the Joliet Alano Club. We'd like to get a special use permit to, we basically hold self-help meetings anywhere from AA to GAA, Gambling's Anonymous, you know, all sorts of other things. And we've been in the process, we've been in this area as a club, or, you know, because it's called the club, for approximately 65 years. Started on Washington Street, moved to Republic temporarily. We've had a little space in Shorewood, and there wasn't enough room or anything like that, so we were able to find the nice buildings that was available here in Crest Hill, and it fits our needs. And we've done a lot of work on top of things, you know, delivery work that, you know, so, you know, I've already got, you know, like I said, a lot of things have changed because a lot of people we were working with aren't here anymore, including, you know, Mr. Wilkins and some other things. But I've got all that in place, so we have adequate funds to fix up the building, plus some. And we also have, uh, let's see, I've been working with, with Bob Goble, who's from United Architects. So we are going to have all this set up, because we're going to have to take the inside of this building apart a little bit, put it back together, and add a bathroom or two, and do some other things. But I have a architect, you know, who's going to help us with, do all that. And I, I'm a, well, let's see, I'm an insured contractor, you know, and I usually do most of my work in Joliet and a lot in Will County. So, and I've done some work in Crest Hill, too. I'll be one of the people working on this building so we can keep our costs down. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to present a great use for this building and a good service to the community. And with that, unless you have any questions, that's all I got.
Any questions, comments from city council?
Well, I will comment, I'm going to repeat what I said at the work session. First of all, I admire all of you for your dedication to this. I know that it's, you don't get paid for this. This is a passionate thing you do to help other people, and I admire you for your tenacity in that. And I also would like to further say my comment that I said then, that people, you know, cities are not made of just rooftops and cash registers. There are churches, there are schools, there are places like this that help residents. And I thank you for your dedication to this. Thank you.
And I thank you.
Any other questions, comments from city council?
Mayor, there is a correction on the ordinance. The ordinance states that the Plan Commission meeting was held on August 16, 2022. It was actually August 10, so that was a typo.
Okay.
Mike, did you have anything?
Well, I'm looking at the six conditions from the Plan Commission.
And you show seven on this.
There's seven.
And I know that the residential occupancy prohibited was added, but you said eight, so I'm trying to figure out what we're missing out.
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking, there are seven, there are seven on page 270.
Eight would have been the ordinance that you wanted to, because there's an apartment in the building upstate. We're not going to use it as an apartment. Nobody's going to be living there, that type of thing. We just-
That's it was five.
No, that's, yeah, that's already in there.
Well, that was the one that wasn't in there when we were here the last time for the workshop. So it may be at five, but it was eight to me.
I'm looking at the cover page, Mike, where it said that there was, the attached ordinance includes the residential occupancy prohibition discussed by city council for a total of eight conditions?
I think that's Tony's error.
Okay, so it should be seven?
In the memo.
Okay, all right. And there were seven that we worked through. Is there anybody else that wants to speak from the Alano Club? Okay, so then, John, since you are the spokesman, well, let me, let me ask this. You can have a seat for a minute. How's that? Let me ask this. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against the proposed special use permit located at 1807 Plainfield Road to the Alano Club of Joliet for an indoor civic institutional use? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, and your address is optional. Second request, if anyone would like to speak for or against, the special use permit request of the Alano Club of Joliet for the property located at 1807 Plainfield Road for a special use permit for an indoor civic institutional use. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. And a third time, if anyone would like to speak for or against, the request of the Alano Club of Joliet for the property located at 1807 Plainfield Road for a special use permit for an indoor civic institutional, institutional use. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. Hearing none, I would ask, John, for you, come back to the podium. And for the record, I am going to ask for the city council to vote or make a motion on an ordinance granting a special use permit to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property, the petition of the Alano Club of Joliet. There are seven conditions that were discussed at the Plan Commission level, and those seven points were also discussed at the work session we had with city council. So I'm going to go through them.
Actually, just to correct the record, Mayor, there was six discussed at the Plan Commission.
And one, like I said.
The additional one came up at the work session with council.
Correct, for seven. So I'm going to go, I'm going to read each one of these, and I'm going to ask if you agree or disagree on record for the, also that is part of this ordinance, okay? Number one, a shared parking agreement with Joliet Hillcrest Shopping Center LLC dated July 8, 2022, attached and included as exhibit C. The requisite parking reference in exhibit C shall be provided at all times for the entire duration of the use and operation of said special use permit by Alano Club. If said parking agreement is terminated, Alano Club will have 60 days prior to the expiration of said parking agreement to obtain the requisite parking, satisfy the parking condition of the special use permit, or the city council may conduct a show cause hearing to determine if the special use permit should be revoked. Do you agree or disagree with this?
I agree.
Number two, requisite onsite and offsite parking spaces utilized or designated for use by the Alano Club shall be property, shall be properly restripped. Agree or disagree?
I agree.
Number three, the existing dog run on the south side of the building, including the fencing and screening fabric, shall be removed prior to final occupancy being approved.
Oh, I agree.
Okay. Number four, trash recycling receptacles shall either be screened and gated in accordance with the Crest Hill zoning ordinance or stored inside the building. Agree or disagree?
Oh, I agree.
Number five, residential occupancy is prohibited on the premises.
I agree.
Number six, all signs or proposed signs shall comply with applicable sign code regulations Number seven, compliance with plans. The development, maintenance, and operation of the property shall be in substantial compliance with the plans and documents as submitted, except for minor changes approved by the City Administrator, the City Community and Economic Development Director, or their designee. Agree or disagree?
I agree.
Okay. With that, City Council, I would ask for a motion. We have a motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Vershay, for the approval of the special use permit for civic and institutional use for the Alano Club located at 1807 Plainfield Road. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kuhel.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Vershay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Christine Overland.
Yes.
Mark Sapieth.
Yes.
and Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance 1928.
1928.
Yeah. Thank you, I will thank you. It's been a lot of work, and thank you all for working with us and, you know, making it happen. We make you all proud.
And I know it was a long road.
Yeah.
I know. I had several conversations with Todd. We worked through a lot of things. I know that Tony did a lot of work on this one also.
Yeah.
So I want to welcome you to the city of Crest Hill. I hope you have a long stay here with us. As I said, I talked with individuals from Shorewood. They had nothing but high compliments for your organization and the way you run, run the business and the help that you supply to a lot of people that need certain, certain individual needs.
Yeah, it's a good location. It'll work out really well, so, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from Council?
Now, I'd just like to make a quick comment about Tony. I had an opportunity to meet with Tony before he left. We had a really good discussion on everything, and I just want to make for the record that I know there's like some rumors and gossip, he did not leave here because of City Council. We didn't even have the opportunity to work with him, so I just want to make that clear that the City Council is not the main problem. So, I will keep the rest of the conversation to myself, but I just want to make that for the record. And I hope we get somebody in quick, thank you for following up with that, and hopefully we get somebody and continue on working. I appreciate that.
Okay. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to the Police Department. Our Police Chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Evening, Mayor, Council. I do not have any agenda items this evening. I will tell you that our Halloween trick-or-treat hours will be from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, pretty much mirroring our neighbor Joliet. But again, our trick-or-treat hours this year will be from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. We will have extra patrol out for the children as well, and I will entertain any questions.
Is there any way you can announce on social media about those candies as well? Because there's a lot of articles and news about certain candy, like just to give awareness for the parents because they don't check the candy, especially those, they look like tarts, whatever they call them. Yes. Tarts, the little candy tarts?
Like sweet tarts, smarties, that kind of thing. Allegedly, but there was another report that came out that's not happening.
It better be safe than sorry.
They weren't given out yet.
Also, the school as well, we can like...
Oh, absolutely. I believe we have already reached out to the schools regarding that, but yeah.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Once again, you can get Reese cups of mine.
I appreciate that, Gene.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ed. Moving on to the Mayor's Report, we did handle the Lions Club. Just a couple announcements from me. I did forget on the special use that we just did. Bill Thomas is here, the Chairman of the Plan Commission. I know the Plan Commission did a lot of work on this also, so thanks to the Plan Commission members. They came up with most of the requisites for the additions, so thank you for that. I did receive a message from Chaney-Monchi School. They are going to have their annual parade on October 31st on Halloween at 1:00. That will be on the agenda for the City Council meeting in two weeks on the 17th for the approval of the road closures and the help from the Public Works Department to keep all the children safe for the parade. And lastly, the fall cleanup for the Crest Hill Veterans and Police Memorial will be on Friday, October 21st at 9:00 AM. And the rain date, or the cold date, will be the following Friday on October 28th. We'll be cutting down the daylilies and moving things in and making everything look halfway attractive for the winter season. And then hopefully, we'll be moving the memorial very soon to New City Hall. So, that is it for the Mayor. I'll try to answer any questions anybody may have. Hearing none, we'll move on to our City Clerk's Report. Christine Vershay Hall.
Thank you, and I have nothing to report tonight.
Any questions of City Clerk? We'll move on to our City Treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to report regular overtime payroll from September 12th, 2022 through the 25th of 2022, in the amount of $244,951.28. I do request a motion to approve our list of bills, which during that same time period, excuse me, from September 27th through October 4th, 2022, in the amount of $2,048, excuse
Someone just presented.
Second. We have a motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of a list of bills from September 27th through October 4th, 2022, in the amount of $2,048,760.27. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Vershay?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapieth?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
and Joe Kuhel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I thank you all. Take any questions if you have them. Questions of City Treasurer? Thank you, and good night. All right, thanks, Glenn. Unfinished business, we have nothing. Anyone? New business?
Um, new business, Mr. Mayor, I'd asked at a future date, we put on the Council agenda discussion of the civil service test. The wording on, I think it's in 2.2202C, the wording of it about civil service, we could bring it up for discussion.
Who just wrote in that?
The, you got the, I couldn't read it exactly. It should be in the general rule.
It took like, does?
No, 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 it's 2.22.
What does 2.22?
This is it? Oh, okay. Yeah. The language there, I'd like to discuss that at a future date. See it on the agenda.
And what is it? That was, that was approved tonight, was it not?
Without any change to...
Okay.
Right. This is what I see. So, C section, the section referred to has not been changed per ordinance 1926. It was approved without any change tonight.
Right. And I'm asking, this is new business, and I'm asking that we take a look at this on the agenda at a future council. Just this item, I'm not talking about the others that we did, that we did approve tonight. Okay, work session. Do it at a work session.
And what's the topic of the discussion?
Language to facilitate the facts and evidence to the Civil Service Commission for the hiring, promotion, discipline, and discharge of non-accompaniment head of the city, except police department employee unless otherwise provided by the statutes of Alano.
So the discussion's about the language in that section?
Yes. Well, section C, isn't it?
Fixing C.
Fixing C, you.
2.22.030, the general rule is section C.
Okay, anybody else in our new business? Committee Liaison Reports? City Council Comments? Positive City Council Comments? Anything you'd like to share with your constituents? Begin with Board Four tonight, Alderman Kuhel.
Nothing to add at this time.
Alderman Albert?
With all the discussion about Lions Club, I'm not sure if it came up, but this Friday and Saturday is the annual Candy Day fundraiser. The club members will be out on the corner of Plainfield Road and Larkin Avenue, both Friday and Saturday, so if you see some Lions out there, give generously to some of the causes that were mentioned. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Sapieth?
Yes, I would just like to make a comment about the amended ordinance that we voted on and passed tonight regarding the City Administrator position. I'm pleased to see this amendment pass this evening. I believe the increased transparency and communication that this will bring will allow us to better serve the residents of Crest Hill. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Alder Person Overland?
Well, I want to welcome the club to the city and congratulate the Lions Club on the anniversary. And that's about it.
Alderwoman Gazal?
I want to announce once again that we're partnering with Calvary Church of Mayoral and Aurora Food Pantry and White Oak Library of Crest Hill will be doing, hosting an event for pop-up food pantry on Saturday, November 5th, from 10:00 to 12:00 PM at the parking lot of the library. So we'll continue promoting this to continue helping the residents that are in need. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Jefferson?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Vershay?
I'd like to thank Crest Hill Lions Club for all they've been doing for the last 60 years. Congratulations, fellas, ladies now also.
Alderman Dyke?
Uh, nothing else to add, Mayor.
Okay, public comment. Anyone like to address City Council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Linda?
Linda Dyke, 1700 Kelly Avenue. I've lived in Crest Hill almost 65 years at the end of this month. I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed when I have company come to my house, and I have to tell them, don't look for Kelly Avenue, look for the TV and the chair that's been sitting there for over a year and a half. Maybe you can clean it up. Then, as you're right around the town, it's disgusting. Maybe we need a dumpster program. Put a dumpster on every block, and maybe they'll pick up their garbage. This house, I had a tree that was dead. I got a letter immediately. If my yard looked like this, I'd had a letter a long time ago. I'll give you the addresses after I know them by heart. Here's a shed a half a block away from me. The roof's been caved in for seven years. I don't know if our building inspectors go like this when they're driving down the roads, or they just don't see it. But a neighbor who had a dying wife had some leaves growing out of his gutter. He got a letter. Then I don't know if anybody else doesn't drive down Kelly at the corner. You stop at that line, you can see around the corner. Nobody else can see it. Here, anybody want to go on vacation? Here's a camper, four flat tires, no plates, nine years. Let's give Kurt a raise. Go down Oakland Avenue, you can find a shed in the alley. Anybody need it? Free. I've only done five blocks. I'm not done. I'm going to the whole city. Scott's been trying constantly. Call in, call in. I'll take care of you, buddy. I'll take care of it. Nothing gets done. I get better relief from the homeless downtown Joliet if I give them a meal, and these people get a paycheck. Here's some more. City property, Raynor Avenue. Take a look. Nobody sees this? Trailer, yard mulch. We're burning pallets and timber over on Center Street. You got any? Want to go to a fire? Let's go to a pit fire. How about a boat? Not on a hard surface. A fence is falling down. Maybe you could add this to ground to your signs you're getting for the city. Welcome to Crest Hill. Here's another tree. Poor Mr. Harrigan got harassed constantly, had to get his tree cut down. Now we got them all over the city. Here on Oakland Avenue, behind where the Mavers live. They were told they couldn't park in the alley. Take a look at it now. We lost some good people. Here, truck, flat tires, hasn't moved in years. Here's another one. Trees growing out of trees at a corner. Been like that for years. Here we go, Raynor Avenue, swimming pool, no fence. Here's another one on Cora Street, flat tires, expired plates, still sitting there, Here, empty lot with all this garbage on it. Housewood vines, can't even see the windows. I bet they didn't get a letter. Here's another one, two abandoned cars in a driveway. Raynor Avenue, roof falling in, been like that for 12 years. And this is the best. You don't take your kids to a haunted house. Take them down to Highland Avenue. Look at this place. Isn't it beautiful? It's got vines, you can't even get to the front door. Look at this side of the house. And these neighbors pay taxes to look at this. Isn't this amazing? This is the city of Crest Hill. Welcome. Why don't you come work here? You don't have to do a job, but you'll get a paycheck. Check it out. Look at these weeds. Another car with a camper on it. Look at this. This is the gateway. This is Broadway. This is what people see when they come to our town. Isn't this nice? Wow. Wouldn't you want to live here? Don't you want to come to Crest Hill and stay? Wow, check it out. We can do what we want. Look at this. This is literally disgusting. Your four-wheelers, you can't find where they're driving on the city streets. Here they are, Broadway, right out in the open, and they'll be running tonight. Here, you need a place to stay, your wife picks you out, here you go, camper opened up, they're living in it. Here's another one. Maybe I should be on the city payroll. I think I did more work in the last two days than a lot of the workers have done in years. Look at this. Isn't this nice? And I want to thank you, Scott and John, for trying to get that road cleaned up, but you're beating a dead horse because you don't have anybody behind you to help you. Look at this. Garbage all over the place. Look at, five garbage cans there, one house. Must be the trailer. Here, another dead tree. It just goes on and on and on. Thanks for getting Wilcox cleaned up, and thanks for getting that other house that looked like, you know, rats were chewing on the place and raccoons. Thanks for listening, but I am highly disgusted. I pay good taxes, I keep my property clean, the neighbors keep their property clean, and we shouldn't have to deal with this. And this TV set, this is on Theodore Street. This poor guy committed to putting his cans behind something. Hell, they're right on the street here. You don't have to go far. And that garbage won't get taken out tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
Yes, good evening. Question is regarding the...
Yes, good evening, question is regarding the, Mr. Seaver, which we're mentioning about the water meters, are they going to be replacing all the water meters in our homes? Is there a procedure set for that yet, or?
Yeah, so, we are going to be going through and replacing every water meter in the entire city, unfortunately, as we've talked about many times at this table, right now we're waiting on meters, unfortunately, the same chip that's in a car is in a water meter, so, as soon as we start getting meters, the process that we've used on the east side of town is we do hire a third-party company, who will do the installation, every resident would get a letter, every resident would then call to make their own appointment, and then the company's name is United Meters, they would come in and make that change out. If you don't, if you don't call within first seven days, you get another letter, and we go back and forth until then we have to red-tag, red-tag your water service. But yes, every meter, our goal, our goal was to be the end of 2023, unfortunately, with the lapse of meters, as soon as I get them, I'm going to go as hard as I can, but I'm looking late 2023, hopefully, first or second quarter 2024, to have the entire city completed.
Did you say that part of the city has already been done?
Yes, we started, so, in 2006 or '07, we started on Broad, or started on Hickory, and we start, we've made it all the way to, all the way up to inner, replacing it, so we have started, and that was, it was supposed to be at the beginning, when there was another person in the seat, there was a 12-year plan, when Jim came in, it was, the Lake Michigan move really expedited the change, so that's why we're pushing it so fast now. But it is a great benefit to residents, as Alderman, or Alderman Overland mentioned, they're going to have a lot more data at their hands with the online portal.
Not disagreeing, I just wanted a clarification on the procedure of changing out the meters, thank you, sir, thank you.
Okay, for the record, that was Stu Seifer on those questions, anybody else? Okay, to our City Attorney, Mike, is there a need for an executive session? There is not.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
We have a motion for an adjournment by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche, questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claude Giselle?
Yes.
Christine Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapieth?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhel?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, meeting is adjourned at 8:33 PM, thank you, good evening.